For those folks who just joined us, we're just waiting for it to be 1:30 and then we will get started. Okay, everyone. First off, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for August 27th, 2020. Before we get started, I want to read a number of announcements relating to how we're conducting the meeting today. This relates to why we're not having in-person meetings, so bear with me. If the video conference is disconnected at any time during this meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which will be September 10th, 2020, at 1:30 PM, which is also scheduled to be conducted by video conference. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. And if you have any questions about how to access those documents or any trouble accessing those documents on OKC.gov, Oklahoma City staff is happy to assist you. The number there, 297-2289. Again, 297-2289. Preview of coming attractions, this is like a bad infomercial, you'll hear that phone number several more times this afternoon. For anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item or speak under citizens to be heard, hopefully you have previously notified staff by phone or email or by signing up online. And I will call on you to speak at the appropriate time. I will call on people first who have signed up to speak, and then I'll ask if there's anyone else that wants to be heard. I will also briefly allow for public comment on each agenda item. If you call in after your item has been heard, you will be allowed to speak under citizens to be heard, and speakers will be allowed a limited time to comment, and I'll brief you as we move through the agenda accordingly. When you call in, staff will be muting your line at the outset. Please keep your lines on mute to avoid background noise and disruptions to the meeting until you are recognized to speak. To unmute your phone, if you've joined us by telephone, you use *6. If you've joined us by Zoom meeting, please make sure your device is not muted and you can use the space bar to unmute, or you can simply click the microphone to unmute yourself. I ask that all participants, except the commission members, keep their lines on mute until they're recognized. Commission members will be allowed to speak or ask questions at any time during the meeting, because that's why they're here. And please remember that only one person can be heard at a time. If more than one person speaks, we won't be able to hear both folks. For anyone speaking today, including commission members, please be sure to identify yourself when you start speaking and remember, if you are an applicant or member of the public, please give us your name and address for the record, and I'll ask for those at each iteration. There will be a roll call every 15 minutes if, for some reason, we feel like there's a commissioner that's not present, or we lose somebody's connection, if that's necessary. And if, for some reason, our prime gov voting system is not working, we will accept voice votes from commissioners. So with all that in mind, again, welcome to the Oklahoma City Plan Commission. We're glad to have everybody, and especially under these conditions, we ask for your patience, and we're going to try to be a real bastion of civility in these difficult times. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is to receive the minutes from the August 13th meeting, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah?
Privet will make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the meetings of the minutes of the August 13th, 2020 meeting. That was, a motion was made by Commissioner Pennington and seconded by Commissioner Privet. If we can get that entered into Prime Gov?
It was, Mr. Chairman, it was the opposite. It was, it was Commissioner Privet that moved and I seconded, but...
Okay, did I say that backwards? My fault. Just waiting for your second to be recorded in Prime Gov, Commissioner Pennington.
It's not letting me see that yet. I don't have that option yet.
Staff, can you advise? There it is. Waiting to vote? And please cast your votes. All votes have been cast and the minutes are received. Commissioner Hinkle, you were voted as a non-vote. Did you vote on that matter?
It's not giving me the option to vote. I thought we had this worked out, but for now, I'm going to vote yea.
Okay. Staff, could you please change Commissioner Hinkle's vote to yes, and those minutes are received? Just for the public's benefit, I can't recall if you, well, I know if you're on the phone, you can't. We have a voting system that allows these votes to be recorded and preserved in the record, and as we go through this, there could be delays with that system allowing us to process those votes, so bear with us. We're trying to do this as responsibly as we can. Next item on the agenda are continuance requests previously received. Staff, Jeff, you want to read those real quick?
Yes, we have item 17, SPUD 1244, which has been deferred to September 10th. And that is all.
Okay. Those were previously uncontested requests. So for the benefit of the public, this is item number 17 on today's agenda, SPUD 1244. Is there anyone that wanted to be heard on that item today? I'll pause just a moment before I accept a motion. First reminder, *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer.
Uh, yes.
Uh, looks like Shannon?
Yes. Hi, I, I'm looking at this. I'm having a little delay on bringing up that part on the agenda. Is that item 17 that was continued from the last meeting regarding the 9301 Allison Lane?
Item 17 was...
17 at the last one, that's what I was trying to figure out.
No, it is not. That item is on our agenda today. This is for 415 Northwest Fifth Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
You are most welcome. Stay with us, we'll get there.
Okay.
I'll take a motion on the continuance request on item 17.
This is Commissioner Pennington. I move to continue item 17 to our next meeting.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pennington. I need a second.
Okay.
I have a second by Commissioner Privet to continue SPUD 1244 to the September 10th, 2020 meeting. Waiting to be able to cast our votes. And please cast your votes.
Hinkle is a yes.
Hinkle is a yes. All votes have been cast, and the item has been continued. I believe we have a new request for continuance or withdrawal. Jeff Butler, you want to read that into the record for us?
Yes, we do. Item 11, PC 10675 has been withdrawn.
Uh, that was withdrawn at the request of the applicant, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, without further discussion there, I'll take a motion to withdraw the case.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pennington, I move that we withdraw item 11 as requested.
I need a second on that motion?
I'll second again.
Thank you, Commissioner Privet. I have a motion and a second to withdraw item 11, which for the benefit of the public is PC 10675. Please cast your votes on that withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the one that, that the, we just had a person interested in speaking on, so just for clarification for her, this is the item Allison Lane. It's being withdrawn.
That's a great point. Shannon, are you still with us? That item has been withdrawn. Just if you were here to protest that, I want to make sure I get your comment.
Like, yes, thank you. I am, uh, I am still here, so that means that withdrawn means that we don't have to be concerned with this anymore?
It's gone away, at least for now. They could be filing in the future, but you'd receive another notification of that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Have a wonderful day.
Thanks.
And you can please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, you want to give us a voice vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle votes yes. Just waiting on Commissioner Coffee. Votes are received, and that item is withdrawn. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. For those of you that are new to these meetings, these are items that are deemed administrative in nature where there is no known protest. So go ahead, Mr. Butler, if you want to read those into the record, and we'll make sure no one wanted to be heard on those items.
Yes, item one is case number C 7192, a final plat of Waterstone, blocks one and two. It's a replat, and that is located east of Northwestern Avenue and north of Northwest 150th Street. And the second and last item on the consent docket is case number C 7197, the final plat of MAPS 3 Lower Downtown Park. And that's located west of South Robinson Avenue and south of Interstate, Interstate 40.
Okay. Is there anyone that wanted to be heard on either of those items today? Again, just for convenience, C 7192? Or C 7197? I will point out to the commissioners and applicants that are new, since this is the first item, even though it's consent, our new drainage and detention requirement comments are presented in the applications today. I'm assuming that everyone's had a chance to review those. They appear in each and every case in our agenda today, but I just want to point out that they'll be approved as a part of this first set of consent items. So with that, I'll pause a moment to see if anybody wanted to be heard from the public before we take a motion on the consent docket. *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer. Please be sure that your device is unmuted. I'll pause just a moment. Hearing no public comment, I'll take a motion on the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pennington here. I move approval of the consent docket.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Privet seconds the motion.
Hinkle's a yes.
And please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle voted yea. All votes are cast, and the consent agenda is approved. Next item begins our individual items for separate vote. Mr. Butler, let's start with item three.
Hey, it's case number SPUD 1242, an application to rezone 505 Oakdale Drive from SPUD 1181, SPUD 1242.
The applicant on this is, um, looks like David Box. Mr. Box, do you have anything to add to that introduction?
Uh, no, well, is Mr. Chamberlain putting on the introduction?
Yeah, Commissioner Cravens just skipped right over me.
I know.
You got to jump in here, man. We're here to move. Just briefly...
That's my five minutes, I hope.
Just briefly, this is an application that you saw back in March of this year that was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council for a medical marijuana grow and retail sales. It, at some point subsequent to the approval, it was discovered there was some kind of an error with the legal description that required that it come back through the process. So you're just seeing this application over again. Nothing has changed. It mirrors the regulations of the existing SPUD 1181. It just corrects a discrepancy in the legal description.
That was previously approved by the Planning Commission and sent to City Council for approval?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Box, anything to add to that introduction?
No. On behalf of answering questions, we'd ask for your approval.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant today, commissioners?
No, but it appears we have a protest on it now, but I guess we'll wait.
We did receive a letter of protest. I'd note that for the record. As Mr. Chamberlain indicated, I would also note, we've seen this case before, and we've sort of had the discussion. I'll pause a moment to see if there's new information that anyone would like to share from the public. I'll pause now for that. *6 on your phone or spacebar on your computer if you'd like to be heard, and I'll pause just a moment. Okay, hearing none. Again, we have discussed this item once before, so I'll, Commissioner Coffee, this is your ward. I'll let you lead off the discussion, or if you're prepared to make a motion on the item, feel free, go ahead.
I recommend approval of SPUD 1242.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Pennington. So I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on SPUD 1242. Please cast your votes when available.
Hinkle's a yes.
Commissioner Hinkle casts a vote for yea. All votes are cast.
I'm next, damn it. Sure. I'll go to the fourth.
I'm going to mute you just a moment, sir. And that application is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Item number four is case number PUD SP 1443, application for a specific plan pursuant to PUD 1443, located at 1209 East Tepner Road.
I will just note quickly, this is a specific plan. Our staff report indicates that the specific plan is consistent with PUD 1443 and the master design statement associated with that SPUD. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have any questions or concerns on this?
No questions and concerns by me. It looks, just for clarity, I mean, it looks very similar to the office park that's on Britton and Kelly, so seems pretty consistent to me, but I have no questions.
I'm sitting in that office park, as it were, so I can second your, your thought there. I'll pause a moment to see if there's anybody from the public that wanted to be heard on this item. Again, just to confirm, this is PUD SP 1443A. *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer if you are joining us as a member of the public and you'd like to be heard on this item. Hearing none, I'll ask Commissioner if there's any comment. If no commissioners have further comments, Commissioner Pennington, I'll take a motion.
If there's no other comments, I'll, I'll go ahead and move approval of item four.
Privet, second.
Commissioner Privet seconded the motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the specific plan for PUD SP 1443A. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle votes yes. All votes have been cast, and the application is approved. Item number five?
Case number C 7195 is a preliminary plat of Hidden Creek. That's located south of Northwest 122nd Street and east of North Piedmont Road.
This is Jared Martin, Development Services. I'll give a quick intro. Developers proposing 220 single-family lots, multiple common areas and one office commercial lot on 104.758 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 2.19 dwelling units per acre for the residential portion of the plat. They are proposing public streets, storm sewer, sanitary sewer and water improvements with this plat. The plat is zoned, single-family residential and spud, 1182 with a C3 base. The R1 allows for 6,000 square foot minimum lot sizes, lots in this plat range approximately between 11,000 and 14,000 square feet, so larger than what is required. They will take access from two entrances off Northwest 122nd Street and one entrance off of North Piedmont Road. The applicant is in agreement with the four TEs. Lance Mills with Cedar Creek Consulting is on the line in case there are any questions about the application.
Jared, my staff report reflects that there are six TEs.
I'm sorry. You're correct, six TEs.
And the applicant is in agreement with all six of those?
That's correct.
Okay. Is the applicant on the line with us today?
I believe he is.
While we wait, I'll just note for the purposes of the record that staff report indicates the design of this preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to access requirements for subdivisions with over 200 lots. Commissioner Claire, this is your ward. Do you have questions of the applicant?
Uh, I do not, so I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Okay.
Or if the applicant is not available to speak.
Well, I'll ask real quick if there's anybody, including the applicant or members of the public that want to be heard on this item at this time. *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer, and I'll pause just a moment.
The applicant is online and, and we have no issues with the, with the six comments.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Lance Mills, Cedar Creek Consulting at 11912 North Pennsylvania Avenue, Suite D4, Oklahoma City.
Bummer on the Hidden Creek. I'm sure you'll come up with a better name.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to be heard on this item today? Last chance. *6, spacebar. Okay, Commissioner Claire, I'll take a motion.
All right, well, if no further comment, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of C 7195 to City Council, subject to the six TEs.
Just, just to note, this is a preliminary plat, so we're taking final action on this today.
Commissioner Coffee seconded the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for C 7195. Commissioner Coffee seconded that motion. There you go. Cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hinkle votes in the affirmative. All votes have been cast, and the application is approved. Good luck with the development, sir. Item six?
Item six is case number C 7193, final plat of Knox Farm Edition, Section 1, located south of Northwest 178th Street and west of North Portland Avenue.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. The developer is proposing 64 single-family residential lots and one common area on 13.53 acres, giving a gross residential density of 4.73 dwelling units per acre. Public streets, water and sewer improvements are proposed. The, uh, the application is in conjunction with an application to rezone the property with a, to a PUD 1768 that has an R1 base. Access to this subdivision will be taken from access point off of Northwest 178th Street. Street stubs are provided to the southeast and west. There are, I believe, three TEs on this one.
That's correct.
The applicant has agreed to provide a emergency access point back to Portland Avenue from one of their street stubs that they are providing. This will line up with a, with the street that's planned in the next phase of the development. And so they are in agreement with that. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers is on the line in case you have any questions.
Mr. Anderson, anything to add to that introduction?
So I'll take it. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. No, nothing to add. We did just want to emphasize that we did get the emergency access issue not only to Mr. Martin, but also Mr. Wilson with the Fire Marshal's Office. So with that, we do agree with the TEs with respect to TE2, it will be the emergency access, therefore we don't need a variance.
We're, I, I'm in agreement with that. Although this is ward eight, so I'll, I'll jump in. For the purpose of the record, the design of this final plat is in conformance with the requirements of PUD 1768 and the approved preliminary plat for Knox Farm. We discussed in the pre-staff meeting, just in the instance disclosure, the TE2, as it was drafted, commissioners will recall, we've had a number of discussions about suppression systems. I asked staff to clarify that should the applicant be willing to agree to TE2, what they are agreeing to is that if they provide a secondary emergency access point or a permanent access point, then the balance of that technical evaluation does not apply. They agreed with that interpretation of that language, and the applicant is in agreement as well. So at this point, are there any other questions of commissioners or the applicant on this?
It's so correct. We will not be providing suppression.
Right, and that's, and that's what, because you're providing the secondary access, we don't have to have that discussion for the fifth time. So any other commissioners have questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anyone joining us from the public today that would like to be heard. And again, just for your benefit, this is C 7193, item number six on today's agenda. *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer. Be sure your device is unmuted. Any technical problems, 405-297-2289. Hearing none, it's my ward. I can't make one. Otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve it. If someone would like to make a motion, I'll receive it.
I'll make a motion to approve C 7193, subject to the technical evaluations and number two, changing to or adding a emergency access point.
It, TE2 provides for the emergency access point, which they're in agreement with, so you're good.
All right.
I have a motion. I'll take a second.
Second. Commissioner Pennington, seconds.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat, subject to the technical evaluations for C 7193. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hinkle votes yea. All votes have been cast, and the application is approved. Item number seven?
Case number C 7194 is a preliminary plat of Country Colonnade Residential, located north of Northwest 192nd Street and east of North Portland Avenue.
The developer is proposing 160 single-family residential lots and four common areas on 44.99 acres, giving a gross residential density of 3.56 dwelling units per acre. They will be providing public streets, water and sewer improvements. The site is currently zoned, single-family residential R1 with 6,000 square foot lot minimum. The lots in this plat will range between 6,000 and 10,000 square feet. Access shown on the preliminary plat is to come off of a street that's currently under construction called Thomas Drive, which will be dedicated separately. That comes off from the south. They are providing street stubs in all directions to connect to future developments. There is a preliminary plat that was recently approved to the east. Their intention is to work with that, that developer to, to connect through there as well. They do have some TEs on this one, three TEs. TE3 is similar to the last case, deals with emergency access that's needed. They are agreeing to do that emergency access. It's a little bit more complicated than the last one in that they are, they are agreeing to provide that access prior to 30 certificates of occupancy being, being granted for, for their first phase of the development. But they are agreeing to that access. Dean Kalida with Civil and Environmental Consultants is on the line in case there are any questions.
Mr. Martin, do we need to, assuming that we are comfortable with that as a commission, do we need to amend TE3 to reflect the 30 CO requirement?
So, so I believe that, that they can agree to the emergency access. They could even revise the preliminary plat to show where that's going to be. And then when the final plat comes in, we would probably need to make that stipulation that it needs to be installed prior to that point.
So we could leave it here with the applicant understanding, before they come back with a final plat, they need to demonstrate where the second access point will be, or be prepared to agree to the 30 CO limitation.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I understand. Mr. Kalida, are you with us today?
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
Anything to add to that introduction of the comments following it?
I had nothing to add, and we agree to the TEs that were stated.
Okay, perfect. Well, this is my ward. I'll just note, if that is all in agreement, then this, according to our staff reports, meets the subdivision regulations. So I don't have any other questions or comments. Commissioners, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. This would be your chance to comment on C 7194, preliminary plat for Country Colonnade Residential. I'll pause just a moment. *6 on your phone, spacebar on your computer. Hearing none, I can't make the motion, because again, this is a ward eight item, otherwise I would make a motion to recommend approval. I'll take a motion if someone's prepared to make it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pennington, I move approval of item seven.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Privet to approve the preliminary plat for C 7194. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hinkle votes yea. All votes are in, and the application is approved. Good luck, Mr. Kalida.
Item number eight? Item eight is case number C 7196, a preliminary plat of Villas at Pembroke, located south of West Wilshire Boulevard and east of North County Line Road.
So this is a preliminary plat to develop 29 two-family residential lots, so 58 units, and one common area on 8.87 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 6.54 dwelling units per acre. Public streets, water, and sewer improvements are proposed. The site is currently zoned, PUD 1769. They can develop under the R3 medium-density residential district, which this falls under. They're allowed to have 1,800 square foot minimum lot sizes with 20-foot minimum widths. However, they are building lots that are approximately 6,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet in size. They will take access from two entrances off of West Wilshire Boulevard. There are no street stubs provided to the southeast or west, because those those directions already either have a plat in place or already have development that's occurred. All streets will be built to public standards. The applicant is in agreement with all the TEs. And Mark, Mark Zawar, Tim Johnson, Johnson and Associates are on the line in case there are any questions.
Does someone with Johnson and Associates want to add anything to that introduction?
This is Tim Johnson. We don't have anything to add. We do agree with all the TEs, and we appreciate your positive vote.
Fair enough. I'll just note for the record, the design of this preliminary plat conforms to the subdivision regulations as they relate to subdivisions with 30 lots or less. And with that clarifying point, Commissioner Clare, this is your ward. Do you have questions or thoughts or comments on this one?
No, and if there's no further discussion, we'll give an opportunity, but once, once we have that, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, any other commissioners have comments since he's prepared to make that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's any member of the public that wished to comment today on preliminary plat of Villas at Pembroke. That's C-7196, item number eight on today's agenda, and I'll pause just a moment. Hearing none, Commissioner Clare, you're up.
All right, thank you. Happy to make a motion for C-7196, recommendation of approval to City Council, subject to the six technical evaluations.
Commissioner Coffey, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for C-7196. So just to clarify, this action is a final action on this item by the planning commission. And I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hinkle votes in the, yea. All votes have been cast. And that application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Johnson?
Thank you.
Item number nine?
Case number C-7191 is a final plat of Rockwell Plaza. That's located south of Northwest Expressway and west of North Rockwell Avenue.
Mr. Martin, keep your streak going, man.
All right, so this one was on our last meeting, located at Rockwell and Northwest 122nd. They are proposing to subdivide an existing retail shopping center into nine commercial office lots. It's a 26.7 acre site. Access is planned to take, be taken off of Rockwell and Northwest Expressway and also Glade Avenue. Those are existing access points. They do not agree with TE number two, that that deals with the desire, potential desire of the city to close one of their access points in conjunction with a traffic project to, to help the traffic at that intersection of Northwest Expressway and Rockwell. That project is currently under design. They continued at the last meeting to allow for time to hopefully get a little further along in their design and maybe come to some conclusion on that entrance. And I think they'd like to discuss that further. Aaron Maddox with Blue and Associates is on the line, and I believe David Box is also representing the case.
Mr. Box, before you jump in, or Mr. Maddox, before you jump in, I would just add, for the purposes of the record and for playing efficient members, the design of this final plat conforms to the subdivision regulations as they relate to non-residential development. It also conforms to the zoning requirements of the I-2 district. We did discuss this item last week, quick refresher. We continued it two weeks. We actually encouraged them to take four. They didn't want to. My understanding from that at the time was that the city was very close to a, to sort of a resolution for this intersection, which is why we allowed time. I spoke to Mr. Box briefly about this item, and he basically indicated to me that that may not be the case, which certainly changed, changed my view about how long we should hold this up. Mr. Box or Mr. Maddox, do you guys have anything to add to the introduction or those comments I just made?
Yeah, David Box, 522 Call Court. I'll take it. So I was hired after the last time it came up. I did go back and review the hearing. Any indication that my client is close to an agreement with Oklahoma City to close this drive is simply incorrect. We do not agree to close this drive. The drive that is there has been there for decades. It is very important to the viability of the shopping center. That drive meets all spacing requirements. As the chairman rightfully pointed out, the plat conforms to all subdivision regulations. As such, it must then meet all spacing requirements or access. We do not agree, we will not agree to close this drive. So we would ask that you strike TE2. We do agree to TE's one, three, four, and five, and would ask that you approve this plat.
Commissioner Box, what year was that driveway installed, that curb cut?
Well, I appreciate you calling me commissioner, but you
Oh, sorry.
High of an elevation for my status. I don't know. It has been there for decades. I grew up in Northwest Oklahoma City and frequented the shopping center. And it has been there for, I think, more than two decades. That access drive has been there for quite some time. There are out parcels that are fast food restaurants that depend upon that specific drive.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Box.
There you go.
Commissioner Clare?
There you go.
It was there.
Do you have questions or comments on this item?
Crystal's Pizza was there, and it was next to it then, I believe.
Crystal, yes. Many birthday parties there.
Commissioner Clare, are you with us?
Sorry, I was on mute.
You're all right.
No, and if we're not any closer with the, with the the traffic improvement project, I don't think it's fair to, to hold up the applicant's application, so I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I think, I think I'm in agreement with you there, Commissioner Clare. But before we do that, let's see if there is any, anyone else that want to be heard on this item today. This is C-7191, final plat of Rockwell Plaza, item number nine on today's agenda. Star six on your phone or spacebar on your computer. Please remember to unmute your device, and I'll pause just a moment.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to the public, I did have one question.
Oh, of course.
Could we just, could you just briefly walk me through, if we go ahead and, and it sounds like I'm in agreement before, before Mr. Box's response to that. It sounds like I'm in agreement with this, but I just want clarification. If we, if we agree to this, how does this impact the city's effort to try to address the traffic issues at that corner?
I guess I'll try and take that one. Someone from Traffic might be, might be better to take this one, but my understanding is that that the its potential interference with the current drive with a right turn lane that they're looking at putting in that location, and they don't want the drive to come out into that right turn lane. You know, if this were an existing subdivision that had already been platted years ago when this was developed, and the city wanted to to make an improvement at this time, they would have to go through a process to work with that owner to, to handle that. So I don't know that this would be any different, regardless of the timing of the plat. I don't know what your thoughts might be on that, JJ, but that's, that would be my understanding anyway.
You know, and just since you've got this up on the screen for the, for the commission, benefit of the commissioners, especially Commissioner Pennington's asking these questions, whoever's got control of the of the exhibit here, if you could scroll your mouse over the top of the map to where this drive actually is. It's not where you think. It's actually east of that. Keep going.
Under the N and Northwest Expressway, the
Yeah, right.
That's correct.
A little bit further, a little bit further, right there. Just so we're clear, that's the drive at issue, correct, Mr. Box?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure you see that, Commissioner Pennington, because it, when you look at that exhibit, it's a little unclear, because the outline seems to show you that, that sort of outcropping that's further west. It's actually the entrance that's there. A little, little further to the left, a little further, right there. That's it, right there. Okay?
And, and just, just for reference, there's, there's a current right turn lane there that's approximately 300 feet long, so almost the length of a football field. If the plan is to either add an additional right turn lane or lengthen the, lengthen the right turn lane to longer than 300 feet, which would take it back further west, you know, I don't, I don't know what the intent is with the, with the plans, but I really feel that either of those two options really, I don't, I don't see how this drive could, can really encumber that, so.
Mr. Clare, it looks like Mr. McCubbin has joined us from Traffic. He may have a comment.
Yes, this project is to add a second left turn lane from Northwest Expressway onto Rockwell. When we do that, we're going to have to widen the road to the south, which will move the right turn lane that's existing another 12 feet further south and cause conflicts with the driveway. That's my understanding. I've only seen the plans. They're 65% developed. And the project was part of the 2017 bond issue, so that's where it's coming from, as far as I know. Traffic is not developing it. I've only seen the plans once, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCubbin, very much for clarification on that. Other commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Pennington, that address your concerns, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Okay, members of the public, forgive us for that interruption there, but I will take your comments at this time. Just, I'll pause for a moment. C-7191, star six on your phone, spacebar on your computer. Please be sure your device is unmuted as well. Hearing none, Commissioner Clare, if there's no further comments, it's your ward. I'm still in support of the, of the application, the way it's configured.
I'll make a motion to approve C-7191, deleting TE2 for recommendation to City, City Council for approval.
Commissioner Hinkle, second.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hinkle to approve the final plat for C-7191. And again, just to confirm, this is final action on this item, as it is a final plat before the planning commission. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And that final plat is approved.
Thank you.
Item 10?
Item 10?
Case number C-7178, preliminary plat of Scissor Tail Crossing. And that is located west of South Check Hall Road and south of Southwest 29th Street. Also, we have a variance to Table 5.1 of Section 5.3.2. A of the subdivision regulations.
Mr. Martin, your show.
So this application was continued previously, so that they could work through some of the TEs, I believe, and talk to some of the neighbors. They are proposing to develop 605 single-family lots for common areas on 143.2 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 4.22 dwelling units per acre. Public streets, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water improvements are proposed. They, they did recently rezone the property from double A to single-family R1. This was in an area that was kind of on the fringe of our service area, and I believe has recently been brought into that as far as water and sewer goes. The lots in this plat will range in size between 6,000 and 10,000 square feet with a front 20-foot building line. They will take access from one median divided connection with Southwest 29th Street and one median divide connection with South Check Hall Road. Properties on the other sides have been previously developed with five-acre rural subdivisions, so they aren't providing stubs in those directions. Currently, we're, we have in there that they want a, a variance to the cul-de-sac length. That's what the variance is for. That goes with TE2. The applicant thinks that that can go away and would, would say that they would meet the cul-de-sac length with the final plat or get their variance at that time. From our perspective, as long as, as long, if they need a variance at some point, as long as it is, is dealt with, then I don't know that it matters either way. So you can choose which way you want to go on that. And then TE4 is a, is really kind of a generic TE that goes with the sidewalk requirements that we put in a lot of, a lot of cases. They are agreeing to provide the arterials sidewalks, and then also the sidewalks inside the neighborhood, but are, but are asking to delete the remainder of that TE related to the common areas, and especially crossing Mustang Creek. From a staff perspective, we want to make sure that the sidewalks are installed along, especially along the street frontages of the common areas. If there is a, a common area that is part of the boundary of the plat, then in building a sidewalk that doesn't serve anything over, over a portion of a creek may not be, may not apply in this case, but so they may, they may speak more to that. I believe David Box is on the line, as well as Mark Grubs, to represent this application.
Before we get any comments here, just a couple of things for purposes of noting the record. The design of this preliminary plat conforms to the subdivision regulations as they relate to access requirements for subdivisions over 200 lots. I would also point out, commissioners, just as a reminder, that we did see the zoning application for this, which was recommended for approval at our May 14th, 2020 meeting. And I asked a question in our meeting today in advance with staff about TE number four and TE number two. Jared, if we, so I want to make sure we understand this. If they, if they agree they can meet the cul-de-sac length requirement, then we can simply strike that TE and they would have to comply, or they could re-request that as a TE for a variance for the purposes of the final plat. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that clarification, Mr. Box or Mr. Grubs, if one of you guys wants to give us an additional introduction on this, if you feel it's needed?
Sure, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. So we did have an opportunity to meet with, I believe it was four residents that had previously submitted a few protest letters. I do want to point out, I'm not sure if you'll be able to really see it with the, the map that is on the screen right now, but it's worth pointing out that along the west side of this plat, there is a 40-foot buffer that will be common area. So from our property line moving east for 40 feet, we, you'll be able to see it better on there. There is a 40-foot swath that will be common area. There are some trees in there, and it will be kept undisturbed. We recognize that to the west of us, they are larger acreage lots. Those lots were developed at a time in the city in which there was not sewer and water. Clearly, we now have sewer and water, which is why we had a conference plan change as well as a rezoning case that was not only recommended for approval by Planning Commission, ultimately was approved by the City Council. But with that said, recognizing the larger lots to our west, we do provide that 40-foot swath along the west side. There was also some drainage concerns. There are some pre-existing drainage problems that exist out there. Our development is downstream, you know, so our development is taking the items that are already there, not pushing it on them. So we are downstream. We will be able to clean up that common area and hopefully provide for slightly better drainage. So we do want to delete TE2, going back to that. TE4, constructing a sidewalk across a creek is problematic. I've never seen that requirement before. We do agree, as Mr. Martin said, that, you know, on the, the side of the street where it's adjacent to common area, there will be a sidewalk. There will be a sidewalk along arterials, and there will be a sidewalk throughout the neighborhood. It's just that constructing a sidewalk across a creek, given the fragile nature of the drainage in this area, I think, is perhaps problematic. I do, just for the record, I want to make note, on page five of your staff report, you've got Section O detention determination. It's my understanding that this is language that is not fully vetted and finalized. We understand that whatever the ordinance says is what we'll have to do. We object to anything outside of what the ordinance requires being imposed upon us as it relates to detention. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Very quickly, so just to clarify on TE4, striking the words across creeks and/or drainage areas satisfies your concern with that technical evaluation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that was discussed with, with staff again, and it, it, at the staff meeting, and that, and they're and that, and their, their concern is just that the common areas are going to be accessible for pedestrian purposes. That the actual, you know, people that live there are going to be able to get access to this, and you're in agreement with that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and then on your comment about the detention requirements, the detention determination, which is item number O on page five of 10, it is our understanding that that memorializes what is existing in the current code today and that you're held to those standards. So that, that's our understanding of it as well as we're approving it, so just to clarify that.
I understand. As long as that's what the ordinance says, then we will certainly meet the ordinance. If it's anything above that, then we would certainly object.
That sounds like an argument for another day. Um, with that, uh, I will, um, ask, first of all, Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward. Do you have additional questions or concerns on this for the applicant?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, uh, I'll open it up to members of the public that are here today to be heard on C 7178. I'll tell you at the outset, and for the purpose of the record, we did receive, uh, a letter, uh, dated July 1st in opposition. That letter points out the concerns of property values, traffic, noise, and crime, road capacity limits, and infrastructure pressure, and drainage issues, which the applicant addressed. I had a chance to sort of examine these, as I'm sure other commissioners did as well, so we are aware of these concerns. We also received, uh, today, um, Mr. Grubbs and Mr. Box, for your information and record, uh, a number of signatures in opposition to this that was signed on a consistent letter. I did not count the number of signatures, unfortunately, beforehand. I would estimate, uh, and that there are at least 40, primarily dealing with infrastructure and drainage-related issues. So, uh, just so you guys are aware of that, and to make sure that the other commissioners received that email since it did come today. So, uh, with that, this is the opportunity to be heard. I do not have anybody that signed up in advance to speak, but I'm going to open it up. This is C 7178, star six on your phone or space bar on your computer, and I'll take folks one at a time. Uh, and again, we do limit comments, uh, to five minutes, and I'll be tracking that as we go, so at this time, um, I'll turn it over. Okay, uh, if there's no more other, do commissioners or no one wants to speak on it, uh, are there commissioners that have other questions or comments or concerns on this?
Um, yeah, I'm, just, just a quick comment. I'm really, um, this is Commissioner Pennington. Just really surprised that we didn't see some of these objections, um, during the rezoning, and just wonder, thought that was unusual, that we didn't hear some of these concerns, or did we? And I'm just, my memory fails me.
I don't recall specific concerns. Uh, now, to be fair, I do believe this letter was in our previous packet, um, which is, was written on July the 1st, which, uh, which was actually in your packet as printed, which addressed some of those things. You know, I think just for preserving it, the, uh, and, and documenting this for the record, we're keenly aware of the infrastructure challenges as development grows into this area. Um, I don't think it's been our policy that, um, you know, we're, we're going to limit development because, you know, bond issues haven't gotten there yet. I think we all have learned that, uh, you got to put people someplace if you want infrastructure to come, because they're not going to build it unless, unless people are there. The drainage issue staff addressed at our pre-meeting and talked it, and talked, you know, at some length. Um, and, and frankly, the new comments helped preserve that the ordinance would be enforced. And I would just point out too, in your staff reports on that comment, um, since, you know, no one did call in, but I wanted to reflect that we understood the concern and addressed it. There are two places in the staff report where detention and drainage-related issues are addressed. The first, as the applicant pointed out, is item O, um, on page five of 10, under subsection two, um, which addresses the detention determination, and there's also a comment as well, uh, on, um, item H, under part two, which says, "Plans for drainage improvements within private drainage reserves and common areas must be submitted for review, uh, and payment of inspection fees shall be made prior to construction." So these things will be looked at, um, and, and as we know, and it should be comfortable with at this point, are a part of the development process. Um, I don't see anything else in there that are something that we can really justify concerns on in terms of whether or not this development is going to create crime or affect property values, so. Other thoughts on that, Commissioner Pennington?
No, I, I appreciate you really pushing the, uh, the drainage issue, because I know that that's really important to people, so.
For sure. Uh, other commissioners have comments? If not, uh, Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward, so if you're prepared to make a motion, now's the time.
I'm having some connection, uh, problems here for clarification. Uh, where are we on the variance request?
Uh, so where we are on this item at the moment is a variance request is not needed because we're going to strike TE number two entirely for now, should.
Okay, I'm still having trouble with the audio. Uh, are we going to request the variance at this point?
N- n- no. We're going to strike TE2.
Sorry, was that a yes or no?
Okay, um, Jen- Jennifer, are you on the line?
My internet connection is unstable according to my screen. I'm sorry.
Okay, staff, can somebody give, uh, Commissioner Coffey a call and try to assist offline? So we can get her some help on the microphone side of things. Um, at this point, I'll take a motion if someone can make it. Where, where we are, to clarify, is that TE2 is not required. They're agreeing to strike it, which means if, if, if they wanted to extend the cul-de-sac beyond 700 feet, they'll have to request it again before the final plat could be approved. Otherwise, they're agreeing to meet it.
Let me go ahead, let me go ahead and make this motion, and then, uh, if I'm making it improperly, go ahead and correct me. Uh, at this point, I go ahead and make a motion for approval of preliminary plat, case number C 7178, striking, uh, TE number two.
And amending the language and.
Yeah, yeah, we got it. Can someone second that motion and add the additional requirement for TE4, which is striking the, the verbiage, including across creeks and/or drainage areas, please?
Mr. Chairman, I, I second the motion and make that amendment to the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for C 7178, striking TE2, and amending TE4 to delete the words, "including across creeks and/or drainage areas"? Please cast your votes when available. All votes are cast. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Coffey?
Commissioner Coffey, yay.
Commissioner Coffey's voted yay. And that application is approved unanimously. Uh, item number 11 has been withdrawn. Item number 12?
Case number PC 10676, application to rezone 13,000 North Mustang Road from PUD 1538 to the RA, single-family, one-acre rural residential district.
All right, this is an application to rezone 46 acres of undeveloped property on the east side of Mustang Road, just north of Northwest Expressway, from a current PUD that allows urban-scale, single-family, and duplex development to the RA District. Uh, the owner developer, uh, is interested in, uh, it securing, uh, larger lot size, and that's the reason for the RA zoning. Staff found it to be in conformance with the comp plan and recommend approval, and Dwight Butler represents the applicant.
Mr. Butler, anything to add to that introduction, sir? Star six or space bar on your computer. Make sure your device is off, or your device is unmuted. Okay, um, Commissioner Clare, this is your ward. I'll turn it over to you. Any questions, uh, for staff on this one?
Uh, no, no questions, and I'm ready, prepared to make a motion, uh, if there's no further comment.
Other commissioners have comments on this one? Okay, before we take a motion, uh, I will, um, ask if there's anybody here, members of the public that wanted to be heard on this item. This is item number 12, PC 10676. I'll pause just a moment. By the way, as a reminder, if you have any technical issues, 297-2289 is where you can get some technical support for our meeting today. Hearing none, Commissioner Clare, your show.
All right, I move approval for item PC 10676.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Privet. So I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10676. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Coffey, I saw you voted on Prime Gov. Are you back able to vote on that? Commissioner Coffey? Uh, can staff conform, confirm for me that she entered that vote on her own, please?
Yes, I have.
There we go. Okay, all votes are cast. And the application is approved unanimously. Item 13?
Case number PC 10677 is an application rezone 2,700 Northeast, 120th Street, from R1 to AA.
No breaks, JJ, you're up, man.
All right, this is a eight-acre site, developed with a single-family home. It's on the south side of Northeast 122nd, just west of Bryant. And we're rezoning from R1 to double A to permit, uh, growing of medical marijuana. Staff found it to be in conformance with the comp plan and the surrounding development and recommended approval. Matthew Hoffman and April Mays represent the application.
Uh, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Mays, anything you wish to add to the introduction to staff on this item?
Hello? Am I, uh, am I on?
You are indeed. Anything you want to add to the introduction staff made of your item today, sir?
Uh, no, it sounds, it sounds great. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm down for any questions, though, that you may have.
Okay, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have additional or, um, initial questions for the applicant or staff on this?
Several, and I am deeply concerned about this development, and I visited with, uh, Councilwoman Nice this morning, who shares my concerns. So I'm, I'm echoing not only my concern as a planning commissioner, but a sign of things to come as this application goes forward to the city council. My first question, and i- is about the fact that we're moving to, uh, we want to permit medical marijuana growing. Um, so I'd like to hear from the developer about the mitigation they at least have in mind for all of the people in the surrounding neighborhood. And in that, I'd like to hear an explanation for how, with this existing neighborhood of homes that, as you can see from the map, are very close together, how will you develop the infrastructure necessary to have trucks or whatever items you will be using to move your product out of this area, out into where you're going to, you're going to sell it? I think there's some very serious concerns about how that will impact the surrounding area. When typically, when we're talking about a straight zoning application for, to AA, we're looking at turning down the intensity of the use. Um, so there is a, there is a letter in the packet, um, of objection from, from neighbors, but I'd just really like to hear from the applicant what they have in mind, what plans, if any, they have to mitigate, and understand that, that I need, that I intend to, to, uh, move to deny this application, because even if we agree to it with straight zoning, there's no opportunity for us to implement any, uh, of the mitigation measures you're even going to propose. So there's my, my comments slash questions.
Yes, sir. Um, yes, I understand your concern, and I, and, uh, and, you know, I, I currently grow, uh, for medical purposes, and I sometimes yield more than I use, and I just would like the opportunity to sell to a friend's dispensary. I'm not going to have any employees. I'm, it's going to be a total DIY, um, venture, uh, just a small indoor project, so. Um, so it, it sounds very intimidating. Whenever I read it too, I would, it scared me. I was like, whoa, wait, that's not what I want to do. I just want to have the ability to not, uh, throw away some of the crop that I yield, that I use for just my, my own purposes. But, uh, and I, and I would, I'm happy to, to help, uh, uh, help justify or prove, prove that in any way possible. But it, this is total small business. I don't even, I mean, it's like a handful of crops at, uh, um, a season, so. Uh, and the, the, uh, um, uh, the land from the, uh, uh, south and the west are both, uh, zoned agriculture as well. And, uh, there's a, there's a house on, on one of those two.
Our, our staff report reflects that the surrounding sites are all zoned R1. Um, and, uh, Mr. Hoffman, what I would echo, Commissioner Pennington's concern, would just be that, uh, while you may have great intentions, understand that when we approve a rezoning request, we are making a permanent change to the use of the land. In this case, that request, although you intend to limit it, would allow for eight acres of cultivation. So at some point, someone could come in and, and use the entire eight acres for that purpose. Uh, there are other tools within, um, you know, zoning that would allow you to really limit this use. It would be, uh, the, the implementation or the adoption of a PUD or an SPUD-type format, uh, for the purposes of, of allowing this use, but giving, uh, Commissioner Pennington, the neighbors, uh, and what sounds like Councilwoman Nice, the ability to put some protections in place for the surrounding uses, but maybe allow you to have a quasi-personal use. I'm not saying or indicating or suggesting that that would be approved, but that's probably a better approach here. So, uh, it, it, it sounds like the, the commissioner for the ward is, is not in support of it. Uh, I wouldn't be able to support it in its current configuration. Um, your options here would be to press forward and have a discussion on the merits of the case as it's presented, uh, to essentially, uh, withdraw this item, and you'd have to reapply, um, and, and provide a new notice again to the neighbors, uh, for an SPU. I guess it'd be a PUD because of the size of the acreage, wouldn't it, JJ?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be a PUD, so.
He wouldn't have to.
Reapply with a PUD.
Okay.
It's up to you. We, I mean, I don't want to force anything on you. You're the applicant. This is your show, but, um, what would you like to do, sir?
Yeah, no, that's fair. I, I want everybody to, uh, my neighbors to feel comfortable, and of course, if they don't, you know, then, uh, I don't, I don't want to pursue this. So that's my utmost importance, and, uh, and whatever I need to do to make sure that they're, uh, secure with that, then I will do.
Fair enough. So, uh, you are in agreement or comfortable with us with withdrawing this item at this time, if that's what the commission wishes to do?
Sure, yes.
Uh, the, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the application wouldn't have to be withdrawn. We can continue it, uh, say for 30 days. We would take the, uh, the fee that's already been applied for the rezoning and apply that to a PUD.
I, okay, my fault. I was under the understanding because we were changing that, we would have to renotice for the PUD purpose, no?
Have to, but don't withdraw this application. We'll just continue it, and then.
That preserves that, that preserves, remember to pay two fees, is what you're saying. Got it. So how long do we need to continue it then to provide adequate time for notice and amendment of the application?
I would, I would say at least till September 24th.
So we've got a renotice. Neighbors, uh, Commissioner Pennington, are you of the opinion that people are going to want to discuss this? Do you have neighbors that have reached out to you and are going to want to discuss this?
Neighbors are going to want to discuss it, and so is Councilwoman Nice. I think we're going to need more time than a month, but.
I would agree. What's our first meeting in October?
Yeah, I, but I'd be open if, if the applicant is feeling comfortable and, and staff is feeling comfortable, I'd be open to saying we'll, we'll do September 24th. But I think that's a really aggressive timeline, and we'll probably end up back here continuing it again.
I would, I would suggest we put it in the first meeting in October. That's my opinion. As long as the, if that doesn't hinder the applicant in any way, you know, materially, I, I just think that's a really quick turnaround.
That would be 10-8.
Mr. Hoffman, are you in agreement with that?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and let me just say, Mr. Hoffman, and, and I'm sure, I think I've got your phone number and email address in the staff report, so I will reach out to you. I'm, I think there's probably a lot more openness to what you have explained here at the commission meeting than there was to, to the application as presented. So I'm not, I hope you don't think the door is closed. I think we just need to have some more discussions about how we can, how we can make this work, so.
Yes, thank you. That's fair.
Are there commissioners, uh, for the benefit of the applicant, are there other commissioners that wish to provide feedback or thoughts on this item as we, since we're continuing it? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Commissioner Pennington, um, I, I I, I will, um, ask if there's anyone that wants to be heard on this item. The item is being continued, so I would ask that unless it pertains to an, to a disagreement with the continuance, that you withhold your comments until the item's heard on the merits at a later date. With that, I'll pause a moment. Uh, this is for members of the public on item number 13, PC 10677. In the current position is we intend to continue this case until October the 8th, for the applicant to amend his application. Commissioner Pennington, hearing no comment. I'll take your motion. We're ready to make it, sir.
I'm ready to, uh, move a, that we continue item 13 to the October 8th, uh, Planning Commission meeting.
Claire, second. I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Claire to uh continue, PC one zero six seven seven, the rezoning for twenty seven hundred northeast one hundred and twentieth to our October eighth, two thousand twenty planning commission meeting. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote on this one?
Yes, please.
All votes are cast, and that application is continued. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Item fourteen.
Case number SPUD twelve forty-three, application rezoned six twenty-one North Oklahoma Avenue from downtown Business District to SPUD twelve forty-three.
This is an existing two point eight acres, two point three acre site that's developed with two warehouses. Uh, we're going from the DBD to a spud with a DBD base that adds uh agricultural uses to permit medical marijuana growing. Uh, this was reviewed by the downtown design review committee, and they recommended that the spud incorporate the regulations of the uh DBD district and be subject to design review, which it does. Staff found it to be in conformance and compatible with the uh uses in the area. We recommend approval with four TEs, and Jonathan Russell represents the applicant.
Uh, JJ is the applicant in agreement with all four TEs?
I do not know that yet.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Russell, were you with us today? I saw him a second ago.
Yes. Can you hear?
Yeah, we, we sure can. Start out by giving us your name and address.
Jonathan Russell, one one four Northwest Sixth.
Mr. Russell, there are four technical evaluations on our application. You're familiar with those, I presume?
Uh, yes, I saw them uh just before the meeting.
Any objection to these?
Um, actually, I had a conversation with uh, uh, Mr. Liggins um about one, three, and four. Um, the, the land, the raw land here, all of the uh medical marijuana uh cultivation would be inside one of these warehouses. Um, and the raw land there is intended to be development land. Um, and in fact, we're in uh conversations with him it's right now. Um, so we would uh ask that we could uh table one, three, and four, or delay those until such time that we further develop this lot.
Well, we, we, we can't do that because it's a part of the application for the entirety of the rezoning. Um, so we can't, we can't table them. Um.
Real, real quick, uh, this is Commissioner Highsmith. Uh, the, can't we um, you know, as part of this, don't we just keep these TEs in if he's in agreement at time of redevelopment? We just keep them in and they go with the zoning, and at the time that it's, that they actually do the development, that's when we would enforce those improvements?
Yes, that's normally when they would be required.
Yeah, so I think, I think basically.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Asa. Asa, you're muted.
Yeah, I was, I, I heard the applicant, I think, about to speak up. I was going to let him go.
Um, item, uh, uh, TE one uh, uh, requires that uh the uh improvements for landscaping be completed before certificate of occupancy. So I just wanted to clarify that in the comments that you were making.
Yeah, I guess I'll kick that.
You're going to have to file a change of use permit is your concern, right, Jonathan?
I beg your pardon?
You, you're going to have to file for a change of use permit? That's what your concern is?
No, uh, my concern is, is developing a bunch of landscaping on land that we're just about to develop. Um, when this use is really just confined to this building and nothing, and nothing changes with the building. We're not, we're not using that land out back, and it's about to be developed. So to go out there and create berms and uh sprinkler systems and all of that sort of thing, just to tear it back out, um, doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
JJ, did you, did you, did you include this because of that reason?
No, I think the way it's written, it would require them to bring the landscaping up to code by the initiation of this use. Now, what we've done in the past is said any new construction would require the property to be brought up to code.
So we could say something like, in accordance with DBD regulations prior to uh new construction.
Correct.
Okay, regulations and guidelines shall be met. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Does that satisfy your concern?
And item four doesn't relate to the existing parking. It's any, any new parking provided would have to meet code, so the existing parking would be fine.
And you said that was TE four?
Yeah.
Do we need to add something about existing parking lot is?
Add, add the word new, any new parking.
Thank you. And then he also had concern over TE three. Is there anything we need to do with that one, JJ? We could just say at the end, prior to new construction?
I think that was a, a specific concern of the DDRC, that they wanted the, the uh, the fencing to comply with the downtown regulations.
Mr. Russell, any strong objection to that?
No, no, that's what we need to do to get, to get finalized. I'm.
Okay. So, so uh Commissioner Highsmith, just since this is your ward, my friend, we, he's in agreement with TE two and three. Uh, he's in agreement with TE one and four as amended. Uh, we amended them to, to, to say, or we would be amending them to say as follows. TE one, in accordance with DBD regulations, prior to new construction, uh, right, prior, prior to new construction, regulations and guidelines shall be met, period. Um, TE four would be any new parking lot provided shall be paved and landscaped according to DBD standards.
I got those notes.
Um, Commissioner Highsmith, do you have additional concerns or questions on this item?
Uh, I do not.
Okay. Other commissioners have questions or concerns on this for the applicant? Hearing none, I'll ask if there are members of the public that are with us today that wish to be heard on item number fourteen on today's agenda, which is SPUD twelve forty-three. I'll pause just a moment. Star six on your phone, space bar on your computer. Please be sure your device is unmuted. And since it's been a minute, two nine seven two two eight nine is the phone number you can use if you have any technical concerns or problems today. Again, two nine seven two two eight nine. Hearing nothing, Commissioner Highsmith, your show.
Okay, I'm going to give it a go. Let me know if I screw up. Uh, I make a recommendation uh of approval uh with uh the following changes to TEs. Uh, TE one would read, in accordance with DBD regulations, prior to new construction and guidelines and shall be met prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the site. Uh, items two and three will be accepted as written, and item four, any new parking lot provided, uh, provided shall be paved and landscaped according to DBD standards.
Before I take a second on that motion, Mr. Russell, are you comfortable with those as read?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second uh for which came, the second came from Commissioner Coffey to recommend approval to city council on SPUD twelve forty-three. Um, amending uh TE, TE's one and four as read and accepting items two and three. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and that application is approved unanimously to city council. Good luck with the project, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen.
Case number SPUD twelve forty-one, it's an application to rezon one one eight two zero Northwest Expressway from R one to SPUD twelve forty-one.
This is a two and a half acre parcel undeveloped on the south side of Northwest Expressway east of Piedmont Road, uh requesting to go from R one to a spud with a C three base. Uh, still fond of being in conformance and consistent with the surrounding commercial development that's already in the area. Uh, recommend approval with three TEs. TE two, as written, can be deleted because it's already in the uh, in the PUD at twenty-five feet, but I believe that the chairman wants to discuss that one, and the applicant wants to discuss TE number one. And Mark Grubbs represents the applicant.
Mr. Grubbs, are you with us?
I am.
Uh, anything to add to the introduction?
Um, the T number one, um, we would just uh ask that that be modified to state that the site, site proof screening and the five foot landscape buffer not be required where adjacent to AA or residential along our south boundary, unless a final plat adjacent to our south boundary is submitted prior to a building permit being issued for the property spud in question. Um, we would agree to the site proof screening and five foot landscape buffer if a final plat was filed. Um, my concern with this is that property to the south of us, um, it may not be by, a final plat may not be filed on that for ten years. And if lots were to come in, they were, they're going to want new site proof screening anyway. So I see no reason to uh, for that to be constructed at this time. This is the same language uh in our spud is consistent with the uh spud to the west of us, and therefore that's why we put that language in there. TT two is uh in the spud, uh, therefore we've already agreed to the twenty-five feet, and we agree to uh, so that, and that would be removed, and T three would be um agreed to.
Uh, Mr. Grubbs, two co- two comments on that. I know this is a, this is a unique site. It's triangular shape poses some challenges. Um, in the past, the commission has tried to press to get those dumpsters from commercial developments fifty feet from residential projects. Is that feasible here?
I don't know at this time.
That was, that's, that's my fear. Um.
And you're right, it's uh, the triangular shape and nature is going to only make it more difficult. Uh, the west side of the property has quite a bit of drainage coming through it. Um, the medical facility to the west discharges onto us. We have drainage coming from the south. Uh, so therefore, it's, it's pushing the uh development in that triangular track to the east. Therefore, I wouldn't really want to agree to the fifty feet, so.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll let Commissioner uh Claire in just a moment give his thoughts on that. I mean, I just, just, that's a um, I think a reasonable concession to adjoining residential that we've tried to push through as a means of policy code or the stipulated sort of boundary is twenty-five feet or separation. Fifty is a little bit like requiring the hundred and fifty foot distance for the drive-through windows. It's just an accommodation as a compatibility mitigation measure for adjoining residential. So anytime we can get that fifty feet, we're going to, I, I think, again, I don't speak for other commissioners, but it's, it's just been our practice to push for that fifty feet. So I wanted to jump out in front of that. As it relates to TE one, Commissioner Claire, this was discussed briefly at the um staff meeting, and I think staff makes a good point on this, Mr. Grubbs. They said, look, the screening is not as big an issue if it, if, if and when it's developed as residential, require the screening. Um, but the landscaping, by putting it in now, it gives it at least some opportunity to mature and actually be somewhat effective at creating a mitigation measure between the commercial use and the potential residential use to the south. That seems awfully practical to me. It seems to make some sense. Uh, I don't know what Commissioner Claire's thoughts on it are, and this is his ward, but that, to me, it seems like we should break that into two TEs, Mr. Grubbs, and say, screening shall be provided along the south line in accordance with code requirements if and when developed as residential. TE two or TE four, I guess, would be landscaping shall be provided along the south line in accordance with the code requirements. Any objection to that strongly?
There's no objection to that. Um, the, back to the, back to the dumpster issue, though, I will say, you're asking for a fifty foot, um, you know, to move that fifty foot off that south line, but also that dumpster can't be in front of the front building line. It's a, yeah, that would make it very tough.
I get it. I know, that's why I say, like, I, I'm, I'm, I recognize it in this site. It's, it's very, very difficult. So I'll, uh, any, anything else you want to add, Mr. Grubbs?
No, that's it. I would agree to your splitting the TEs and uh, and addressing it that way.
Okay, um, Mr. Claire, Commissioner Claire, you want to jump in on this?
Yeah, I mean, that was, you know, we, we saw a couple of similar things uh last meeting about both bu- buffers and dumpsters. Um, I, I don't, I understand that that's, that's undeveloped to the south, uh, and it might be for some time, but I think um basically putting the burden on that developer um to, 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 to do that buffer. And that's the way that I, I interpreted your explanation, Mr. Grubbs, is that they're, they'd want to do something different. And so we just don't, you know, need to do anything right now. Um, I, I don't, I don't think that's fair, but I, I do like um Chairman Cravens' idea and staff's idea that at the very least, uh, the landscape should go, should go ahead and be installed at this time, so that it gives it time to mature and um maximizes that buffer. Um, and then at a later time, the salt, the, the site proof screening of either a, a wall or fence, um, you know, it could be installed at the time of um, you know, development of that residential parcel.
Okay, other commissioners have uh comments on this item or things they want to say here?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you bringing out the uh dumpster issue, because I think we should always take very careful consideration to that every time. But I, I agree and respect uh what Mark said about the, this site in particular, they can accommodate that, and I respect that. So I'm not going to make an objection, but I'm glad that we are having that conversation, and I hope that we continue to make sure that we've made every effort to move the dumpsters if we can.
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a common thing that's requested from adjoining property uses, and it seems like a reasonable mitigation and accommodation to those folks to try to create separation there. And, and the reason I wanted to bring it up to Mr. Grubbs just in general is because he appears before the commission about every meeting, and I wanted him to be aware as he looks at future applications from a planning perspective that that's something that at least this commission has sort of adopted a policy of trying to do, because so many people request it. It's really a response to what's being requested by neighbors and protestants and applications we see, and it's consistently done. I mean, as you point out, we had one last meeting with the apartment complex, and they, that was a big issue for them was all those dumpsters, and it seemed very reasonable to me they would have those concerns. So anyway, that was the reason I brought it up. Um, at this time, I'll turn it over to the public to see if anybody wanted to be heard on this item today. Uh, just again, for the purposes of, of the record, this is SPUD twelve forty-one, item fifteen on today's agenda at one one eight two zero Northwest Expressway. Star six on your phone, space bar on your computer. Please be sure your device is unmuted. If you want to be heard, now is your chance, and I'll pause just a moment. Hearing none, Commissioner Claire, if you're comfortable with the TEs as amended, I'll let you make the motion, or I'm happy to reread them for your convenience.
Uh, I'll take a shot at it, and you can jump in if I miss anything, but I'm happy to, to make a motion to approve spud. Twelve forty-one, uh, subject to the technical evaluations, amending technical evaluation one to read landscape, landscaping shall be provided along the south line in accordance with code requirements, deleting TE two, TE three is good, and adding TE four that says uh site proof screening shall be installed uh along the south boundary line in accordance to code requirements at the time of residential development, parcel development to the south.
That's exactly right. Uh, I have a motion to add a second.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Pennington, so I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on SPUD twelve forty-one. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Pennington's vote is not registered, and Commissioner La Forge, your vote is not registered. Oh, there we go. All votes have been cast, and that application is recommended for approval unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Grubbs.
Thank you.
Um, uh, real quick, before we go to item sixteen, uh, staff, um, Mr. Pedinger, Pedinger, forgive me if I'm saying it wrong, wanted to be heard last time. We had a six-hour meeting. He not surprisingly hung up. We had, as an accommodation, agreed to telephone him as we got close to the end of the, the agenda. This is today's last item, so I want to be sure we've done that, or he's on the call, because I can't see everybody for sure. So this would be the time to do that, and with that, we'll start with item sixteen. So this would be the time to do that. And with that, we'll start with item sixteen, Jeff.
Item sixteen is case number P C one oh six seven eight, application to rezone thirty-seven oh nine Northwest Eleventh Street from R one to C three.
This is an application to rezone a single-family lot. Uh, it's developed with a single-family home. It's on the north side of Eleventh Street, uh, just west of Portland. We're going from R one, single-family to C three to permit, uh, auto detail shop. The site abuts a commercial auto sales lot on the west, but is surrounded by, uh, R one, single-family homes on the other three sides. Um, the lot extends west, uh, past the established commercial zoning line on the west side of Portland. That you can clearly see on your, on your map. Uh, staff felt like it was a, an encroachment of commercial development into that neighborhood. And it did, does not conform with the goals of the comp plan. Uh, our recommendation was to deny the application and George Mendros, uh, is the applicant.
Mr. Mendros, are you with us today?
Uh, yes, George Mendros, fifty-eight hundred North Porter, Norman, Oklahoma.
Thank you very much. Anything you want to add to the staff's introduction of your item?
Uh, I just wanted to add that, uh, that looking at this, uh, we, we've actually been approached. Well, because of one of the things was that, that they said that the house would need to be removed. Um, and that, that was one of the things that they wanted, they said that they couldn't be done. Um, but, uh, we already have someone that wants to take the house and, and move it two streets over. So the house would stay in the same neighborhood and we'd be okay with, um, not removing any trees. We're just wanting to extend the fence line to the existing property that is to the east of there.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, your intention is not to remove the structure?
No, no, the, the, the house would be removed, but it's, um, there's someone that wants to put it on his lot that is, that's just two streets over. So the house would be removed from there, but it would, it would be moved, removed in two streets over and staying in the same neighborhood. And something else that it's, that, uh, the committee had said, where, um, the conference considerations is that there would be, uh, the trees would be another thing that. Mature trees, the trees would be left alone. We're just wanting to extend the fence line is all we're trying to do. And we're not adding any new structures to, to the site that's we're speaking of right now.
Okay, uh, anything else you want to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Coffee, this is your ward. Do you want to lead off our discussion here?
Well, um, I, I agree with the staff report, uh, while there is, as a considerable mix of retail and some, uh. Residential on Portland itself, uh, allowing this commercial business on Eleventh Street would be. Uh, moving into residential area, commercial establishment, uh, to which I would not support.
Uh, I will add to that. There's just no way for me to get behind, uh, an application like this. Where we have, uh, a fairly intensive commercial use intruding deeper onto what is indisputably a neighborhood street. Uh, well, as Commissioner Gobby points out, if, if you look at an area which I am now, uh, on my screen, you, you can see there are some commercial businesses along Portland. Uh, for me, that party's got to end, um, unless we were talking about a larger scale development. That was going to take into account a block or something and we could reestablish, you know, a buffer and, you know, things like that through a P U D process or something. I just, there's just no way that I can get behind, uh, applications like this for the benefit of the neighborhood and the people that are on those streets. Other commissioners have comments on this?
I should add that I have received, uh, earlier, uh, one call objecting from a, a neighbor, uh, a few houses away. As well as one, uh, during the process of this meeting, uh, objecting to this application.
Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Coffee. It's good to know that for sure because that was not in our packet. So thank you. Commissioners, other comments from you guys?
Yeah, just Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pennington, I, I think that, um, I agree with you, especially from the standpoint. Uh, straight zoning, as I said in the issue in my own ward. I think the only way we could consider something like this is in the form of an S P U D or P U D, or I guess it would be an S P U D for the size of the, the lot. But I think we need, we would need to evaluate, uh, to evaluate the mitigation. Because if all he's looking to do is continue the auto sales that is on Portland, maybe there is a tactful way to, to, to do that, to extend the fence line. And, and mitigate. I, I, I'm not, I guess I just don't want to close the door entirely, but, but in its current form, I, I completely agree with you. So.
Well, the, the point you're making is a good one. Mr. Mendros, for your benefit, I, I can say whatever I want. I'm only one of, of nine votes. Other commissioners can feel differently and vote accordingly. Um, I'm not hearing any commissioner speak up to support your application in its current form. We have a recommendation from staff to deny it in my view for very good reasons. I, I'll just tell you, so, uh, because I, I want to be very upfront, you, the way that this is configured, you couldn't get me there with an S P U D either. Uh, and because of the size of this lot, I know it would be an S P U D, a P U D. Um, but, uh, again, um, that you're not going to get me there, the, given the, the, the size of this and the way that it lays out. You'd have to take the entire city block from Liberty to Eleventh. And then come back in with a, with an application that shows me you're going to buffer the whole thing. So we're sort of setting a new block line, uh, before I could even listen to it. Um, that's just me speaking. I don't, I, again, I don't speak for the commission. I'm, I, I just conduct the meeting on their behalf. So other commissioners want to speak up and provide feedback, this would certainly be a good time to do it. Um, otherwise I'm just going to ask if there is anybody from the public that wants to be heard, and I think we'll take a motion as it sits.
This is Commissioner Claire. I'll, I'll just add, I mean, I understand Mr. Mendros's desire to grow his business. Um, but there's an appropriate way to do it and to the west, in my opinion, is not. Um, I don't know if you've had any discussions with the owner to the, to the north. But I mean, that, that would be the only way I could support it is if, you know, that expansion was to the north. Um, and in the end, this, this piece of property just might not suit your needs. Um, and you need to find a larger piece of property, uh, that's, that's zone the way that it, uh, it needs to be for your, for your use.
Thank you.
Other commissioners have comments? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that wanted to be heard on this item today. Again, this is item number sixteen in our packet on the agenda. P C one zero six seven eight, application to rezone thirty-seven oh nine Northwest Eleventh Street. I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody wants to speak up or add anything to our discussion. Star six on your phone, space bar on your computer. Make sure your device is unmuted. Okay, hearing none, um, Commissioner Coffee, it's, uh, your, your show here.
Recommend denial, uh, P C one oh zero one oh six seven eight.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Claire, a second.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Claire to recommend denial to city council on P C one zero six seven eight. Please cast your votes when available. And again, by voting yes, you are voting to deny it, just to be clear. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that application is denied. Mr. Mendros, uh, I, I would encourage you to look at the application and visit with staff. Uh, and think about a path forward. I don't want you to think that our vote for denial is any sort of, uh, vote against your business. Or our hope that you can continue to grow it and, and flourish here. Uh, this is just a difficult site and a difficult location, uh, to make a business like this work without impacting the neighborhood in our view. And, uh, so we certainly wish you well and we appreciate you coming and joining us today.
I understand. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. That is the last item for consideration on our agenda today, so we move to additional items. Um, at this point, planning commission committees, the drainage committee has been disbanded. Uh, I made that decision on an executive basis. Um, and, uh, so there's nothing there. Uh, planning commission members, Commissioner Claire, anything?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Powers is gone. Um, Ward three, Commissioner Coffee? Nothing?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Privet?
Nope.
Commissioner Hinkle?
I would like to thank Commissioner Privet for all his hard work trying to get my computer working. He failed miserably, but I appreciate it.
Come on now. You know, Commissioner Hinkle, ninety-nine percent of problems on a computer occur between the keyboard and the floor. No good deal.
It was a free lunch for him, so I think we're good.
Uh, it was working just fine yesterday morning when I left. Working great.
Commissioner Highsmith?
Um, I'm, I guess my question would be, Jeff, are, are, uh, are you going to give a report on the, uh? Goings-on of the, uh, zoning code update effort, or should I?
Well, go ahead if you'd like. I'm, I'm happy to. Either way.
I'll, I'll let you give an update. I, so I got nothing then.
Okay, Commissioner Pennington?
Sorry, yes, I do. Just, uh, a comment for, for discussion, for quick discussion with, uh, commissioners. Um, first of all, I do want to thank the chairman for his work on our extensively, exhaustingly long meeting that we had the last time. Um, and I, I thought it was very well handled, um, despite its length. And I appreciate the fact that, uh, that the chairman kept his poise and kindness towards every single applicant, every single time, even though we were all very much worn out. Um, but to that end, I, I think that it would be good for the commission as a whole to come up with a strategy. For how we address controversial, um, issues that we, controversial applications. Um, I think that each of us generally are contacted by members of the community. When those, uh, complex contentious applications come up. But I think it would be a good idea for us to sort of come up with a, a standard way that we inform the rest of the commissioners about those controversial issues. So we can really drill down and make sure that the commission meeting is about what's actually, um, where the actual points of contention are. Sometimes I think we get bogged down in issues that are not actually being, um, that are not actually the issue. Um, so for example, um, last time we dealt with an issue on, on classen. And whether or not to add a, a, uh, medical marijuana facility to, on the street. And we were dealing with an issue of whether there could even be commercial development on, on that part of classen based on where it was. Which was not even an issue that the commission even needed to address at all, because obviously we're addressing it through the S P U D. And so that's just one example of we're, we're off dealing and allowing the public to deal with an issue that again is not a point of contention. Um, because that's within our, our purview. So I guess I'm making several suggestions. The first is that could commissioners make, could we as commissioners inform the rest of the commission? When there is a controversial application and perhaps get staff to share the, the M D S, the application with us so that we can start to be aware. Could we start requesting that neighbors and applicants prior to hearing their case, provide some kind of statement? Cloud, Klaus did that for, um, for the issue that we had in, um, in, of course, I've forgotten the, I was about to say Military Park, Helms Farm. For the issue in Helms Farm, we got this great list of these are the controversial issues, these are the concessions. If, if at all possible, could we try to get that kind of organized so that we have more advanced notice of an issue? And then finally, if we are as commissioners dealing with an application that's difficult, could we also invite other commissioners to attend those meetings? So that we can then participate in that, in those conversations before it comes before the commission. Because it's really hard to process a really complex issue right then and there, just based on reading the application and hearing these really. Uh, serious accusations or issues from the neighbors directly. So that's my long way of saying, I hope that we can find a better way to address controversial issues. And I think the best way to do that is with more advanced notice and involvement with commissioners in the process.
Uh, Commissioner Pennington, let me piggyback on it real quick. Um, so I, I, I agree with the sentiment a hundred percent. And Mr. Brummett, I think, is with us from legal, so he can jump all over me if I say something wrong. I think we want to be cautious about a couple of things. One is negotiating any sort of a P U D or something where, where as a commissioner, you have led someone to believe that you are negotiating these changes that will be accepted. Or that you are adopting changes that will be accepted. You're simply trying to guide a discussion that you're engaged in between neighbors, uh, and, and an applicant. Um, on sort of honing in on the issues. And I think that's your chance to advise them, if you're involved in those neighborhood discussions, to do things like appoint a speaker before the meeting. Um, to coalesce around someone who can speak on the group's behalf. Um, you know, one of the things that we can't do in these online meetings is, you know, when we were in city hall at the horseshoe, we could say, hey, by show of hands, who's here for this item and agrees with the speaker? There's no real way to do that here effectively, um, which makes it a challenge. So I think you could engage with them in that regard, but you've got to be careful not to, not to lead them to believe that you're negotiating their item outside the confines of, of these meetings. The other thing I would say is obviously you can't have a quorum in a meeting. I mean, I think, and, and you don't want to send an email out to all the commissioners or a quorum of commissioners about a specific case that's before us. So what you want to do is you, I think what the right thing to do is, is Commissioner Pennington, if you attended a neighborhood meeting in your ward, you could write an email to staff. And I think that email could, could summarize the meeting, the concerns and the issues. You can give that memorandum to staff and staff can provide that to the commissioners, uh, as a part of our packet review. And I think that's a great way to get information out, because I don't often know, nor does anyone else, that we really have a controversial case. Until you look down and there's sixty people logged in and you go, uh-oh. So, um, I, I agree with you, your sentiment there. Um, and I think there are things we can do as a commission to help each other. I want to reiterate this point that I've made before. I view my job as the chair as running this meeting to your, to your liking. Um, and so any feedback you have or thoughts that you have that we can use to move things along, uh, or to do differently. So we're better, more professional, more friendly, uh, more welcoming to the public, et cetera. I, I, I'm all ears to that, and I think we should have those discussions. And there's no sort of pride of authorship or pride of, of oversight for me. I, I welcome your criticism, your feedback, uh, or ideas that you have in that front at any time. So, uh, I'd share that as well. Uh, I, I appreciate your comments. I think that's spot on. Mr. Brummett, did I say anything wrong that you disagree with, or you think we should do?
No, sir. That's fine.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you, Kamal, very much. Uh, Commissioner La Forge?
Nope, I didn't know.
Sweet, thanks, man. Uh, I just have two quick things. One, um, I want to thank the, the staff so much. Um, I didn't know this, and so I started working to put the meeting together, but, um, and I don't mean to exclude anyone at all. But whether it's Cindy doing all the pre-meeting work, reaching out to people, answering questions. She puts together this great speakers list for me that I don't know you guys ever get to see of who has signed up in advance, so I don't miss anybody. Uh, or it's Francis and, and Paula and Jim, these people that are helping us with our I T and communication. I just really appreciate everything those people do. It's a super thankless job, but they've done it so efficiently. And I, I'd never realized how much work they actually do until I was sort of helping get ready for the meetings on that side of things. And I'll just tell you, they do incredible work and I'm super appreciative for all of it. Um, so, and then, uh, last thing is, this was circulated to me once upon a time. Um, this is a copy of a set of updated bylaws. Nobody throw anything at me. I, I, our bylaws are in desperate need of update. I would like to recommend to the commission that we, um, take an opportunity to have a, uh, some sort of a lunch and learn or whatever. To review this and we can circulate this in advance, so we can keep it to an hour, circulate in advance, go over these bylaws. Get feedback for, our bylaws are terrible. Um, and this is a very comprehensive update, um, that I think really needs to be done for us to continue to improve how the commission runs, what the public can expect from us. Um, and the rules and guidelines that govern how we operate as a group. So, um, if everybody's in agreement with that, um, I'd really like to have Mr. Butler circulate the most recent draft of these. And we can all review them, and then maybe at the next meeting or before that, we can have staff set, send out an invite for like a, a lunch and learn or a study session type deal to discuss them. Is everybody good with that?
I think it's a great idea. Definitely think it's needed.
I got a thumbs up from Asa. I got a thumbs up from Rusty, it looks like. Uh, anybody else? Okay, well, hearing no objection, I, I, let's, let's knock it out and, and, and do it because it needs to be done. Uh, that's all I've got. Planning department?
Uh, so code update, update, um, we, uh, a- as you know, we're, we're slogging through the sign code right now. So we started out a few months ago with, uh, with, uh, getting some focus groups involved. We did several of those, uh, all the way from, uh, industry members to, uh, to neighborhood. Um, and I guess advocates or residents, um, and then we proceeded to, uh, develop an approach. Um, and then we proceeded to, uh, develop an approach, uh, which we presented to the stakeholder advisory team, which, of which there are three planning commissioners and three city council members on and several other, uh, members of the community, uh, professionals, um, in various fields having to do with development. Um, and, uh, we, we actually now have, well, so backing up a little bit. So we, we got some feedback from the stakeholder advisory team, which was fantastic. Um, so we went back and worked with our consultant to try and come up with something that we feel like addresses everybody's concerns, uh, so that we can come as close as possible to, to having something that everybody can be, uh, happy with, or if not happy, at least satisfied with, uh, can live with, um, under no illusions that we're going to get something that everybody will love because there are so many, uh, diverse views. Um, and that's, that's a good thing. Uh, when we've got a, we've had a lot of good comments and perspectives. So, uh, your, your participation has been appreciated. Um, so we now have, we just actually got our, our first rough draft, uh, Tuesday. So staff will be going through that and just kind of making sure that it's, you know, that it's what we all think we agreed to, uh, with the consultant, what we think is what the stakeholder advisory team and the planning commission and city council would feel is appropriate. And then we will bring it forward, um, to the stakeholder advisory team. This, this whole back and forth takes a while, um, because we need to involve multiple departments, staff members, city manager's office, et cetera. Um, so that's kind of where we are. And then, once we get, uh, the stakeholder advisory team input on the draft, we'll proceed through the adoption process. And, um, then we get to go to, uh, what, what I would call the fun part of the code update, uh, where we start. And as you, as you may recall, we, we were kind of, uh, forced to go to the sign code first because of, you know, the, the issues of the day. And so, um, that's not how we intended to start, but it's, it's worked out okay. I think we've, uh, managed to do that as somewhat of a pilot project, so that's, that's just fine. Anyway, uh, once that is done, we will go ahead and, and move on to, uh, the zoning code itself, uh, and looking at the approach, uh, that, that would best fit the needs of our community. And we'll get going on that. Um, so you'll be hearing more about that, uh, later on this fall. But first we have to get through the sign code. Um, any questions on that?
I summarized it well.
Okay, uh, the other thing I'll mention briefly that the commission, uh, or the council chambers and commission chambers, uh, have been remodeled. I've been in there for a training session. There is the largest TV screen I've seen in my life, uh, hanging from the ceiling on a big giant pole. Um, and there are two others to the side. And there's another one for the, for the commission, uh, hanging this behind the, the big one for the audience. So, and everybody has their own screen instead of down in the, uh, in the desk. It's, it kind of sits up and you can, you can adjust it to be at whatever angle you want. Uh, it's, it's big, but not too big. Um, so I, I think it'll be, and, and you'll be able to toggle back and forth at your leisure between your computer, which has your notes from your digital packet and, you know, whatever is on screen, whether it be somebody's presentation or something. So, um, it looks pretty, it, it, it will work pretty, pretty slick, I think. Um, and I think you'll all like it when we do finally get back in, into, uh, into the room. Um, and I, I'm optimistic that it'll be good for, uh, applicants as well and their representatives. Um, who can, um, oh, is everybody still there?
Yeah, we lost, we lost your video.
All right, for some reason my screen changed on me, but if you can hear me, then I guess we're good. Um, anyway, I'm optimistic that it, it will, um, it will help out applicants and their representatives because they can give us things in advance and we can show them on a, a large screen. They can point to things with their mouse instead of having to bring, you know, the, the foam core boards and so forth. So, um, but, uh, I, it's up to you, this body, of course, but it'll, I expect maybe a while before we get there, our authority to run meetings like this will run out likely on November fifteenth, I believe the date was. Um, and, uh, that's, that's all I know, uh, at the moment. So let me know if you have any questions about, about that or anything else.
So Jeff, real quick for our own clarification purposes, what, subsequent to November fifteenth, we would have in-person meetings unless that authority is extended by council?
Uh, it's the state.
Oh, it's the state, okay.
Uh, the governor's, uh, action is what gives us the authority to, or the, the legislature, rather. Um, you know, they passed that kind of emergency deal and, uh, November fifteenth is the, is the deadline. So unless that's extended, uh, we would have to be in person after that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much for all that information. That's great. Any questions? Anybody? Hearing none, um, last thing on the agenda or last two things on the agenda, planning service or development services, I mean, J J?
Uh, nothing from me.
Okay, municipal council's office, Mr. Brummett?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, last thing on our agenda today that I'm aware of, unless somebody's got something in other business, citizens to be heard, uh, Mr., uh, forgive me if I say it wrong, Pedinger, are you with us?
Uh, Commissioner Cravens, he is unable to join us. He has a, he has something he's, that's come up on his end and he's not able to join us right now.
As long as we made a good faith effort, that's what I'm concerned about. So that's great. Um, other business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
I think that's a great motion. Do I get a second?
A second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. We'll just cast our votes, uh, verbally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.